I am really glad to see so many of you here tonight. Thank you all for coming. I'm Giselle Kovak and I'm one of the members of the Unite Miami Shores team who's bringing this event to you this evening. And I want to welcome you to the 2015 Village Council Candidate Forum. I'm going to keep my comments brief because everybody wants to hear what our candidates have to say. But I have to thank a few people for helping to pull this evening together. Thank you so much to Miami Theater Center for allowing us to use this wonderful space. MTC always steps up for this community and I hope you will please support them as they support you. I want to thank Miami Shores' own A.J. Nichols for volunteering to video tonight's forum. The video of the forum will be available to all Miami Shores residents through a link on our website at unitemiamishores.com. We're doing this so that everybody in Miami Shores can make an educated vote. Tonight, we're also honored to have students from Dr. Charter School's civics class with us and I want to thank them for coming. They're getting extra credit. Thank you to Sean Forman, PhD, as an associate professor from Barre University, for acting as moderator tonight. And finally, thank you to the members of Unite Miami Shores. We worked very hard to bring you the Unity Ball and to give the proceeds an unprecedented $75,000 back to this community. Miami Shores residents turned out with great enthusiasm and generosity to make that happen. Now, we're coming together again to help inform our community. Clearly, amazing things can happen in our village when we work together. Thank you all again for coming. You're awesome. So, we're going to meet the candidates and I think we should give them a proper welcome for stepping up in the service of our community and taking on the hard work and commitment it takes to run for Village Council and be a council member. So, I'd like you all to stand up and applaud and let them know that we appreciate their efforts. Matt Glenn. Stephen Zalkowitz. And our moderator, Sean Forman. Good job.
Thank you, Giselle. Thank you, everyone, for being here on a weeknight because you want to hear from your candidates. So, let me just say, I'm honored that I was asked to be the moderator here today. I'm a professor at Barre University in Miami Shores. I'm the advisor to both the College Democrats and the College Republicans. So, I try to be fair and see all sides. Now, we know this is a nonpartisan race, but we have a lot of questions, hopefully different ones that have been asked of the candidates at previous forums, and we want to get into as many of those as possible. So, you had your chance to applause. Applaud for the candidates a moment ago during the forum. If we could please keep the applause held until the end. And also the negative comments, we don't want to have them at all, negative comments or noises in response to the candidates who are up here giving their honest and earnest efforts to be on your city council. So, the ground rules are, we are going to have opening statements of one minute each from the candidates. We are going in alphabetical order, starting on the far side of the stage. We will have a series of questions where the candidates will have one minute each to respond to the questions. There will be one two-minute question, which I will reiterate at the beginning of that question that it's a two-minute. And we have our timekeeper right here in the front who will raise the red folder when we're at 45 seconds and then again at one minute. We don't have bells or whistles, but what I will do is try to keep the candidates as close to that one minute as possible. When we be respectful of the red folder, we can move on and get all the questions in that the time allows for. And if we all look a little bit strange up here squinting, it's because these lights are very bright. So, they may not be able to see you very well either, but we'll make sure that they see the folder in the front. So, with that, we're going to move to the candidates' opening statements, starting on the far side with Sean Brady.
I want to make sure everybody in the back, you can hear me no problem, all right? My name is Sean Brady and I live here and work here in Miami Shores Village. My wife and I are really proud to say that, you know, our children, that Seamus and Ashlyn, are the fourth generation of my family to live here in Miami Shores. And with any luck, my grandkids will grow up here, too. I absolutely love growing up here. I love living here. I'm a small business owner. I'm an IT consultant. And basically, in my line of work, I serve by customers all across South Florida. And it's really important that I pay a close attention to them and listen to them and I take what they tell me that they need and what they're looking for and put together unique solutions that really meet their needs. I have over 18 years of experience of working on leading teams, using technology to solve all kinds of problems for small firms all over South Florida. I'm also very passionate about Miami Shores and about serving Miami Shores. So, I'm hoping to bring that perspective, that experience, and my passion together to serve you on the Miami Shores Village Council.
All right. Thank you. Next. Okay. Now, we'll try to hold that for the entirety of the program. Next, we'll hear from Alice Birch.
Can you hear me? My name is Alice Birch. Greetings and thanks to Unite Miami Shores for putting together, the volunteers that put this phenomenal event together. Thank you so much for that. I've lived here since 1973. My first home was that way, about four houses. My two children were, my husband George and I raised my two children here. And I am crazy about Miami Shores. I love it through and through. And I want to be part of council for the main reason that most of my volunteer experiences have steered me to this. And I feel that I have a passion for good and welcoming and energetic governance. And that's why I'm here. I would like to help you, if elected, to deliver the amenities that our community deserves, create a walkable, connected community, commit to finding solutions with all, and I mean all, residents of the shores. I want a strong thank you.
Thank you. Yes. You'll have more time later on. We hear now from Hunt Davis. And if all the candidates want you speak, make sure you speak into the microphone so that you can be heard and also for the recording.
We have one minute for?
One minute for opening statement.
Hunt Davis, the speed version. Thank you for coming tonight. Thanks for hosting this event. While we're here talking tonight, I would like each of us to think about what it is about Miami Shores that makes it such a great community to live in and to raise a family. I know my options and my choices or my reasons for being here are a strong police department, outstanding education, world-class recreation, outstanding public works and sanitation services, and some of the best people you can find anywhere around. These services that we have didn't come here by chance. They're brought here by a long line of progress-minded councils who have worked diligently to bring improvements to our community while being fiscal-minded as well. I'm committed to continuing that effort. I hope that we learned a lot about our candidates tonight and I look forward to discussing more about these issues in detail with each of you later on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Matt Glenn.
Thank you so much for having me tonight and for hosting this forum. My name is Matt Glenn and I hope to earn your vote in the course of this evening if you haven't decided already. I've lived in the shores for about 10 years now with my wife Denise and my daughters Kennedy and Harper. And we love it here. We love everything about the shores. I grew up in the Coral Gables and a lot of what I remember from my childhood is a part of the shores, the sense of community, the beautiful tree-lined streets. And that, I think, is initially what drew us here and what has kept us here. I started in public service about 15 years ago and I worked for State Senator Debbie Wasserman Schultz at the state level and then I worked for U.S. Congressman Peter Deutch at the federal level. I then went back to law school at night while working full-time and spent three years working in local government law and learning more about the local government level.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next, we'll hear from Yvonne Ledesma.
I tried to stand up and use the mic, but it didn't work. Hi, my name is Yvonne Ledesma and if you've noticed, my husband and I have lived here for over 10 years and we're now expecting a child and we're expanding the community that way. So, over the last two years, I'm a sitting councilperson and I'm really excited to see so many new faces out there. Thank you all for coming. And over the past two years, I have been a true leader, demonstrating a passion for this community and great respect for everybody who lives here. My endorsement and track record, you can find if there are handouts here, you can look for them, prove that I have, that I won't just make promises, that I actually follow through with action. And you can count on me to be a leader in this community. I have a couple of seconds and what I'd like to do is take a picture of you all because you guys look great. Smile. All right, great. Thank you. Hold on, hold on. One more, one more. How about a little more time?
Okay. You can take pictures while we hear from Stephen Zalkowitz.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Stephen Zalkowitz. I live at 420 Northeast 95th Street. I think what really makes Miami Shores great is having everyone so engaged in this process. Seeing this room filled with Miami Shores residents just shows us how much everyone here cares about Miami Shores Village. We've all lived here. We continue to live here. I've been here over 16 years. My wife's been here almost her entire life. Her father still lives here over 50 years. I have public service in this village going back to 2002. Served on two boards, a start preservation board for five years with Mr. Davis in the back on stat and now on planning and zoning board. I have professional qualifications. I have business experience and I have the desire to serve this village, make it a better place for all of us to live, work, and play, and carry forward the good work that's already been done by those who came before us. So, thank you very much and I look forward to answering the questions this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a series of questions that have been submitted by residents. So, I'm going to read the name of the resident who submitted the question and then the question. For each of the panelists, we'll have one minute on this question. We'll start with Alice. I asked the candidates if I could refer to them by their first names throughout the evening. They all agreed and they know the drill. How do we go through this? I've seen them done this twice already. So, starting with Alice, we have a question from Elizabeth Hitt. What would you do to ensure that Miami Shores residents are fully, adequately, and timely informed of the issues facing the council prior to and after council members vote on the issue? In other words, what would you do to gain a more informed and actively participating community? One minute each. Start with Alice.
I have an idea from other cities about this need for residents to know and be able to visualize from their own computer what is happening at the next council meeting. And the way it happens is you insert the PDF and you're able to click on the PDF supporting documents next to the agenda item. Many cities have this. I would love to see Miami Shores do that.
Thank you. To Hunt.
Yes, thank you. Currently, we already have notifications to residents through mandatory notification systems such as posting online and making notices through the newspaper for public hearings. But one of the things we're also exploring right now, in fact, at our next council meeting, we have a new position that we're exploring hiring for the village, which will be responsible for communications to the village through electronic communications and other means of notifying everyone about what's happening at the village council. That's something that I support fully and I think it's a great idea. We need to try to get the word out to everyone as much as possible. So, that combined with our latest initiative of bringing our council meetings online through webs, web feeds, and our partnership with Comcast, it's a great way to keep everyone informed of what's happening and what's going to happen in our community.
Great. On to Matt. Now, of course, if you use less time, we have more questions. And if you want me to repeat the question, let me know.
Thank you, Sean. No, I think that the steps that the council has taken over the last several years should be commended, posting the council meetings online. And I think that the website itself has gotten much better, although I think there's still real improvement in terms of accessibility and being able to find the information that we need. The tool that the police use right now to sort of push to residents information about incidents in your community, I think it's called Zixol. I wonder if that couldn't be adapted where you could go up and sign online on the website to know what areas of interest you have and then you can have updates pushed to you when those subjects come before the council. I think that kind of progressive, you know, sort of forward thinking would be very helpful in terms of helping our residents to better access and better understand what's going on at the council level.
Thank you. Yvonne.
So, early on, Mayor Herta Hawley had suggested that we have a printed newsletter and I thought that was really great to go ahead and give information to the people who do not use social media or the internet. In addition to that, I proposed video streaming and online video archive of our council meetings. For about a cost of $2,000, I made it instantly accessible to every single person in our village to go on, not even, not only look at our meetings while happening live, but also be able to look and see an archive of our meetings. And I was really proud of that. So, what's next? I continue right now to use my social media page, but I will encourage our city government to do so more often. And I encourage all of you to like our Facebook page. What Matt was saying about Nexol, the police department is using, it's a great way to communicate by text message and that is also a good way to communicate with the public, not just for police emergencies, but also for council. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen.
Thank you, Sean. You know, we live in an internet society at this point and most of us want our governments to be hot. And by hot, I mean honest, open, and transparent. So, the website, you know, and it's demonstrated by the fact that each of us has our own website, you know, for our candidacy. So, you know, the website is the tool. We need to expand the website. Most cities have all their agendas, all the backup, all the meetings, all the archives there at your fingertips. So, if you go online, you can find what you need almost instantaneous late. Thank you.
Thank you. To Sean.
And so, for those of you who are at the last forum, you know, this is actually a big part of my platform and I think it's a really critical way to help engage the citizens of Miami Shores in more civic action. So, I definitely think we are starting to move in the right direction. Definitely need to flesh out the website. Definitely need to make sure that we have similar things that we do for the village council meetings, we should also be doing for the board and commission meetings, so people really have a good idea of what's going on, can watch them live, can watch them recorded. And, you know, just to make sure that we have the contact information for all of the different, you know, not just the council people, but the different board and committee members right there up on their page specific to them, along with all the notes and supporting documents of what is going on relative to decisions that are being made. I think that would be a great start.
Thank you. Alice started with this one, so we're going to go to the next question and we're going to start with Hunt. You have one minute for this question, but you may choose, everyone may choose to take less and then there'll be a follow-up. But the second question is, before the election, when was the last time you patronized a business in our Miami Shores downtown? Prior to the election, when is the last time you patronized a downtown business?
I patronize, Mr. Tom. Well, I actually use the Starbucks facility quite a lot. Starbucks for coffee, I go to Iron Sushi for sushi in the evenings, I go to Pizza Joray. I frequent the library. Every Friday afternoon, they have their chess on activity going on there, which is a great program for kids and adults who want to learn and play or teach chess. I wish I could get there more often, but it was, I would say, within the last three weeks when I was at the library last. But I go downtown for dent for dining. This activity's about once a week. It's easy.
Thank you. Matt.
Thank you. Yeah, I think I'm there at least several times a week. We go to Proper Sausage all the time. We love it. I think it's terrific. Chuck works on both my wife's car and my car and we go to Starbucks with some frequency. You know, I utilize and appreciate and enjoy all of the various businesses downtown. I only wish that we had more of them and more choices. And that's one of the reasons that I've introduced my downtown proud initiative and hopefully I get a chance to talk about that in a little bit as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Yvonne.
Some of you may know that I owned a small business here in the downtown, right here on 98th Street and Northeast Second. And I know how important it is to have our community come and support the small businesses. So, the question is, when was the last time? And that was this afternoon. I sent my mom to get some pasta at Mr. Pasta. It's absolutely fabulous. If anybody enjoys pasta, go there. And it's great because people who own businesses in Miami Shores tend to live in the area, in Miami Shores or near Miami Shores, and they care about the residents and they really want to see downtown thrive. So, I am a proud, I used to be a proud merchant and I am a proud resident and I love our downtown and I definitely am proud of all the merchants who try to stay open every single day in our downtown.
Thank you. Stephen.
This is an important question because our downtown is the first place that I look when I want to go to a business. So, the answer to the question for me is I'm there every day. I go to a business every day. My bank is there, my dry cleaner's there. Of course, everyone mentions Starbucks, you know, restaurants, but we need, we need more. I think out of all the candidates, I probably live closest to the downtown and I'm happy to see redevelopment or revitalization come to our downtown area so that we have more businesses because the key to a successful commercial area is having the local residents first supported. And as a resident who lives near downtown, I first look to the closest place to find what I need instead of going somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you. To Sean.
Hi, this is also another part of my platform. I recently went from having a home office to renting some office space here in downtown with the addition of a new family member. Things were a little hectic and one of the things I'd really like to see is more of a small business, people and entrepreneurs here in Miami Shores to come and set up shop. This was tailored by profit at the King Taylor, Taylor King. I, you know, I also was at Starbucks this morning, had a sandwich at Proper Sausage earlier this week and also really try to do whatever I can, you know, to use the businesses that are here in downtown Miami Shores and I hope you all do, too.
Thank you. Alice.
I'd like to say my visits to businesses in order of how much I enjoy them. Lowest on my list is sitting in the Bank of America drive-thru. Second lowest is visiting a CPA on the second floor of one of the downtown office buildings. And then my favorite is Proper Sausage, but Starbucks comes in a very close second. So, thank you and I appreciate this question. And I also might mention that sometimes I get asked by the businesses over on Biscayne, where are the people from the central and western shores? So, just so you know, everyone competes for a business.
Okay. Well, that leads us to the next question, which will start with Matt. And this is the two-minute question, okay? That is, candidates, everyone has two minutes on this and this was asked from several residents. And that is, what would each of you do to bring a viable and sustainable, to bring viable and sustainable businesses to downtown? Viable and sustainable, where in all caps. What experience do you have to implement this? And since you have two minutes, we'll throw it in there. What are your thoughts on the master plan for development and about liquor licenses? And so, we begin with downtown development with Matt.
Thank you very much. I appreciate this question. So, downtown revitalization, downtown redevelopment is a very important thing. It's very near and dear to my heart. I, as I mentioned in my open, I have worked at the federal, state, and local level. The time I spent at the local level was, a lot of it was spent on local redevelopment issues for some of our clients, but I think that we have a unique opportunity here in Miami Shores with the sewers coming in. The sewers are the critical first step and make no mistake, our council should be commended for getting those in place and starting the ball rolling. But to think that that is the only step that we need to take is a mistake. We need to make the downtown more bikeable and walkable. I travel around the country. I see places like Winter Park in central Florida and Bridgehampton, St. Michael's in Maryland. These are great small downtowns that don't have a ton of density, but have the right type of bikability and walkability and mix of retail and restaurants that our residents want to deserve and will support. The thing I hear more often than anything else on the campaign trail is I don't want to drive to Midtown to go out to eat. I don't want to drive to Aventura to go shopping. Open restaurants, open retail in downtown Miami Shores and I will patronize them. There are things that we can do like facilitated crosswalks, like they have down on Biscayne with the flashing lights to allow people to more easily cross the street, make it safer for our kids when they're coming through. I would like to go downtown and speak to our county commission and county government about bringing the sidewalks even further in so we can have proper sidewalk cafes and seating areas where people can enjoy meals. I love the pull-up lane as much as anybody, but in order to create the type of community that I think we truly want, we may have to sacrifice that in the process. We should go to the state government.
Okay. That was two minutes. Twenty-five minutes. They were keeping with the 15 left. Yes, we didn't coordinate that, but that is. Yvonne.
The reason why I ran for council was because of my frustration as a downtown merchant. The ordinances, the rules and regulations that are right now in place are prohibitive to downtown merchants for us to thrive and grow. Part of it is because of the sewers. So, that problem is now on its way of being solved. I supported downtown sewers. I have from the beginning. You will see them coming soon in June and they will be completed in February 2016. In addition to the sewers, there are some, there are regulations, rules against some businesses opening because of the Septic Town. And so, those need to be relooked at. So, we have to look at our ordinances, we have to see the parking regulations, see the type of businesses that are allowed right now, and then kind of expand on them. Another issue that we have is liquor licenses. If we want to attract fine dining in Miami Shores, we know by talking to experts in the field of hospitality and restaurants that fine dining, always a good profit margin is liquor. So, we would have to look at that as well. So, in addition to that, I agree with what Matt said and previous candidates about traffic climbing, calming, beautifying, keeping our downtown historic and charming and quaint. We can make it, we can continue to have a quaint feel and also expand upon it. So, again, making it more business-friendly would go a really long way.
Thank you.
I'll tell you what I've done. Sorry. I stopped time. I'll tell you what I have done. I've proposed an advisory committee to look to be the experts in the field of downtown to create a plan right now while we have time. I've also proposed bike racks. I got bike racks in here. I got recycling bins here. And I also called for flower pots. That is a work in progress. So, I have to apologize if anybody sees that. All right.
Thank you. Stephen.
Thank you. I like this question because this is what I do in my real life every day. I help cities redevelop their downtowns. I serve as the general counsel to three community redevelopment agencies in adjoining cities, North Miami, North Miami Beach, and Hallidale Beach. So, I'm well-versed at what it takes to revitalize a downtown, attract businesses that you want in those downtowns. in those downtowns, so that you have a substantial commercial base. I will say what I've done already here in Miami Shores is I represented a local business owner when she opened up a mom-and-pop cooking school for children right up the street, and she has a storefront there, it's a viable, sustainable business, and it's grown since she's opened it, and I helped her do that on a pro bono basis. I worked with the village manager who did a great job in getting that use approved for that location, and she's doing very well there. So when it comes to our downtown and things that, you know, we've heard about with zoning and height and density, I mean, first of all, our zoning code may need a couple tweaks, it certainly doesn't need any height or density increases, we've got plenty of that, we've got plenty of ability to create a traditional, authentic downtown, it's a traditional neighborhood development. What I would like to see, and I've said this before, is design criteria put in place so when these people do come, and they will come, they're already talking about coming to Miami Shores, because the sewers, once they're in, will allow these businesses to locate in Miami Shores. But what I would like to see is, I would like to see that the buildings have a, you know, a design criteria, and I'll just say quickly, you know, I do agree, after speaking to many of you, that we do need to have liquor licenses for full-service restaurants. I don't think we need stand-alone bars, but in order for a nice, fine dining restaurant to be here, we need a liquor license.
Thank you. Deshaun?
Well, first of all, I just wanted to say I neglected to mention one of my favorite places downtown, which is the Village Stand, so my apologies, it's actually a great place. I think that, you know, one of the things that I would say, that I would do is I would definitely recommend that people move their office to downtown, and that's one way to really experience what's going on there and help add some energy to it. So one of the things I would do is really encourage people to do that and look at what we can do to make that process as straightforward as possible, and I think that would really, really help. I'm a small business expert, so I know that that can be a big challenge when you're just trying to get started, you want as much clarity in the process as you possibly have. I would like to say that as far as a master plan, I think that we have a really good master zoning plan that does allow for the kind of things we need to do in downtown, so I think that it would be important to have a plan that does incorporate bikeability and walkability, some expression of desire for the types of mix of businesses we would like to have there, so that we have the vision laid out before, so we know what we're working toward, when we're working on all of the other projects that the Village is working on. As far as liquor licenses, you know, I absolutely agree that we should have liquor licenses for the restaurants, and I would also be supportive of having something like a wine bar, you know, a place that was, you know, very calm and casual and nice for the people that live here in Miami Shores to go have a bite to eat and have a glass of wine, maybe buy, you know, a bottle of that fine wine. But I also agree that we wouldn't want to have stand-alone bars serving hard liquor, and I think that if we put the right things together, we get people downtown, maybe organize a couple of additional annual events that we can help build a customer base that allows business owners to know what they can expect as far as a flow of customers and put a viable business together.
Thank you. Alice?
You know, the words viable and sustainable are important words, and I think my experience is that for a small business, the word risk is entailed, and so to handle the risk of being a new business on Second Avenue, someone asked me what it would be your first priority as a councilperson. I think one of the top priorities is create a task force that would have one councilperson since, that were governed by the sunshine law and can't really be more than one, working with the chamber and other interested parties, including a business experienced in going through the rigors of getting established on Second Avenue, and having that task force go forward and try to get the permitting process going right now when we know we're going to have the sewers, so that they're ready to serve you and for you to be excited and get to them just as we were when we got our Starbucks, when the headline in the paper said Miami Shores gets its coffee fix. We want to get our fix for having a restaurant that's sustainable, for that we will need a hard liquor license, we basically understand that, and that has to be accompanied by food service. I think that the master plan zoning already allows what we would like to have, but if there are changes to that master plan, I know that we've discussed as a council, looking at the comprehensive plan and adjusting it to our needs. And the walkability and bikeability is a huge part of what we want to see in our downtown, and right now we have traffic engineered professionals looking at the low-hanging fruit is what we want to start with, because everything costs money, but the low-hanging fruit of some of the pedestrian actuated crosswalks that we could have to help right away get our walking and biking. Thank you.
And this question, Hunt?
Yeah, thank you. That's, this is actually a fantastic question, and I think what gets lost a lot in the discussion is that it's equally frustrating from the side of the council when we have passive landlords who don't actively and aggressively seek out businesses that we would all like to see as part of a vibrant and active enthusiastic downtown. I too would love to have a place where residents could congregate, shop, dine, and spend time downtown. I think that'd be fantastic for our community. I think as, from the council's point of view, we're most effective employing a poll-type strategy for this by setting code and ordinances to allow this to happen. We've done a lot of great work towards that end already, including widening the sidewalks, allowing outdoor cafes, bringing in sewers, et cetera. There is also something that I just learned after talking to an expert on the subject, something called a three, it's a three COP SX license, which is a liquor license that requires food to be the dominant sale item at the establishment, and it also grants oversight to the community. I think that's something that, based on what I've heard up here, we can feel safe to say that there would be at least three positive votes for at the next council. There are other things that we can bring too. Mac mentioned bikeability. I'm proud to have been chair of the task force that's brought the bikeability-walkability study to Miami Shores. I'm also exploring the option of bringing bike rentals, free bike rentals to Miami Shores residents, as well as an Uber-type service to Miami Shores. We're very early in the discussions and negotiations, but I think it would be something that would give us free transportation within Miami Shores, and if we can make Miami Shores active downtown, I think businesses would love to come and set up for us. So that's what I would try to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to start a new question now, which starts with Yvonne, and we're going to go back to one minute, so back to your original one-minute statements and answers. And this next question is from Joan Dunn. I'm going to read the question as it is. Do you believe municipal government should be nonpartisan? If so, please explain the reason for your answer to the residents of Miami Shores. Of course, everyone knows it is nonpartisan, so should it remain nonpartisan in Miami Shores?
Yes, absolutely. I do believe that Miami Shores politics, municipal governments should remain nonpartisan. Also, in the nation, every single local government is nonpartisan, and that is not going to change anytime soon, if ever. So we are definitely part of that, and I don't plan to change it, I would never want to change it. What I love about local politics is that I see everyone as an individual, not the party habit they've born. I couldn't care less, and sewers and road improvements and seawall improvements have nothing to do with party politics.
Thank you. Stephen?
Thank you. I see a little bit more to this question. I mean, we all know that local government is nonpartisan, this is a nonpartisan race. The focus of local government should be on local issues and the business of that municipality, and that's what we need to focus on as a council, as a village, to make sure that our local issues are addressed from a business standpoint. I'm running on a business platform, not a social or political platform, for anyone except the residents of Miami Shores Village. So from my perspective, we need to focus on our local issue, we need to address the business at hand, and the rest of it will all come together. We all live here, we need to be united, and we need to have united Miami Shores. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean?
Yes, I also believe that it's really important that village government remains nonpartisan, and we should be focused on local issues. I know that the candidates here and myself, I'm sure, come from different political backgrounds and different political views on things, but when it comes to the issues that are facing our direct community, we need to try to always come together and work together to find out how we can put our own citizens first and take care of the issues that are here facing our families and our community. And, you know, for that reason, that'd be one less thing, or that would be one more thing that could possibly be divisive and, you know, drag us into other issues. So it's a wonderful thing to have a nonpartisan focus, focus on the issues facing our families here in our community.
Thank you. Alice?
I've had an interesting experience with this issue going door-to-door with a couple of young people who were helping me, and they encountered a resident who insisted on knowing my political party in order to be able to open the door and talk to them through, or talk to them through the window, and they weren't going to open the door until I shared what political party I was with. And this led the young people to understand how it is so important, if you are going to represent all of the residents, then you must embrace the residents as they are and as they come to you with their own municipal governance issues. And the best way to do that is to avoid partisan politics in municipal races. So thank you.
Thank you. Hunt?
I've always believed that one of the greatest problems with partisan politics is it tends to degenerate discourse into matters of affiliation and membership rather than taking on the issues at their full value. I don't know if Republicans or Democrats can take out my trash or pick up, you know, or provide security for our community better than what we have now, but I do know that it's important that we represent all of our residents and not just one segment of them. I think that it does a disservice to our community if we try to turn this into a partisan election in any way, shape, or form. We've already talked about how great it is to have such a great turnout tonight and at the other forms we've already had, and I expect we'll have another great turnout in a few days. This is something that I think we would lose if we turned into partisan politics, and this is another benefit of having our elections in April as opposed to the regular elections in November. It's something that I cherish about Miami Shores, this is special about our community, and I would do everything I can to keep it the way it is.
And Mac?
I think I'm going to agree with everybody else here. I think it should remain nonpartisan. I don't think that local government is about Democratic government or Republican government, I think it's about good government. I think local government is at its best when we are building consensus, when we are listening and incorporating diverse points of view, when we are all working in one direction, and partisanship, unfortunately, is a thing that tends to cause that conversation to devolve. And I am encouraged so far by this campaign, and I think what has been, for the most part, a campaign focused on good government and moving Miami Shores forward.
Okay. We're going to go to a new question now, starting with Stephen, and this question's from Kristia Alu. Have you served on any Miami Shores volunteer boards or in any other capacity with the village? And if so, what were your specific contributions and accomplishments to that board that we can see?
Thank you, Sean. I'm happy to get to go first for a change. I'm always at the end. My record of public service to this village is well-known to many of you. Starting in 2002, I had sought to get appointed to a board, and I did through prior council action, and that was the Historic Preservation Board, and that fit well with my city planning, my master screen of city planning. There's a lot of beautiful historic homes here in Miami Shores. I served as the chairman of that board, and I served with Bob Davis, who I had the pleasure of seeing tonight. More recently, I was appointed to the planning and zoning board, and I filled a vacancy of a seat that became open. Recently, I was reappointed to that seat by a unanimous vote of all five council members, two of whom are sitting up here tonight. Public service is something I enjoy, and that is one of the other reasons why I am running. Thank you.
Thank you. Deshaun?
Hey, I would just, you know, like to start by saying I am an Eagle Scout and have provided a lot of service in Miami Shores, that's me. I have applied to be on some of the boards and commissions, and particularly the Doctor's Charter School Board, just because it's that the public education aspect of my job is very important to me. I haven't been appointed to one yet, but that's one of the reasons that I'm running is to try to get significantly more involved and, you know, more, a better, way better understanding of our community. I currently am serving on the Miami Shores Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, so we also have a very service-oriented role, you know, something different than the village, of course, but, and there, right now, I'm currently focused on the communications that we do with the community and in supporting our businesses.
Thank you. Alice?
Yes, I've served, and served, and served. I'm the library trustee, I was the chair of the library trustees, I was the chair twice of the Miami Shores Community Alliance. I was reappointed to the Charter School Board every two years since it was built. I have been on the chamber board, I've been the chair of the Miami Shores Presbyterian Church School Committee, and in addition to that, I was a trustee at Miami County Day School before I ever served on the Charter School Board. So I have had a lot of board experience. The Charter School Board is sunshine law governed, so it has given me that experience of being in sunshine law. It is a difficult way to run a school, but it was something that I've learned and learned to be comfortable with. Thank you.
Thank you. Hunt?
I thought you were going to need three minutes for that, Alice. Eleven years ago, I first applied to be on the recreation advisory board. I was not appointed, but not to be deterred, I went anyway to the meetings. I started sitting in on meetings as recreation advisory board, and when a vacancy opened up within the next six months, I was appointed by the council to fill the vacancy, and that's how I got my start, and I'm just proud of my time there on the recreation advisory board. For those of you who know Ron and Ken and all those people who've been working on that board for a long time, we're still working on trying to get that gazebo for Ron. I've also served one year on the Doctor's Charter School Board, and I was very proud of my time there as well. And as an accomplishment there, I also served on the fundraising committee and the finance committee there within the school, and I continued my efforts that I started as a councilman, which was to stop the automatic draw that the school had against the trust fund, which is one of the reasons why this school is solvent and in good shape the way it is today. So thank you.
Thank you. Mac?
So my answer is going to sound a lot like Sean's, except I wasn't an Eagle Scout. I unfortunately have not served on any boards or commissions here in the Shores. I have an extensive public service background, leadership positions on the Greater Miami Chamber, and I've been very involved with FIU's Law School almost since its inception. I was the president of its alumni association, and I currently sit on the dean's council. But no, this answer to this question is not.
Okay. Yvonne?
This is a great question for me because I too have been involved in civil service for my whole life, starting with environmental protection, women's rights, human rights, HIV and AIDS prevention, and in fact, every time I would tell my parents that I was going to go for a new job, they would ask if I paid, because all of the jobs I've taken that have paid were all volunteer, including the council job. So it fits right in, but as far as Miami Shores is concerned, I'm part of great organizations. I encourage all of you to also look into the Miami Shores Women's Club, the Heidi Hughes chapter of the Women's Cancer Association, the Miami Shores Village People, Miami Shores Chamber of Commerce, the League of Women Voters, the Police Retirement Pension Board, and through my work with the pension boards, I've done such good work that I was actually endorsed by the PBA, the police officers in Miami Shores, and I volunteered for that position, and I really very much enjoy that board.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to start a new question, back with Sean from the far end of the stage from me, and this question's from Ronnie Bennett. Since Miami Shores has a 58% minority population, what are your plans to include some cultural references in our schools, boards, and events?
Could you please repeat the question?
Yes, and I'm reading the question, I'm not verifying this statistic, but it is, since Miami Shores has a 58% minority population, what are your plans to include some cultural references in our schools, boards, and events?
Well, that's absolutely true, that Miami Shores is growing more and more diverse all the time, and I think those stats are correct. I think it's very important to celebrate that diversity. I would definitely like to see, I would like, I think the county public schools try to do a good job of that. I'd like to, you know...
I'd like to, you know, as a PTA member of the future, Miami Shores, I think that would be something that would be very critical to me. And I think it is something that's very important for the village to do overall. We have a very diverse heritage here and down in Miami Shores, and that's really the kind of the foundation of our whole country and one of the beautiful experiences of living here, especially in Florida where we have a rich, diverse cultural heritage, and leading to not only a lot of great times and great people, but excellent food and wonderful parties. So I think it would be really important to see what we can do to make sure that we point out to our fellow citizens the, how diverse our community really is, what the contributions to the community have been from all the different people that make it up.
To Alice?
Going door to door, I've seen incredible, incredible diversity in this village. And my whole idea is to bring as many of the elements of our residents to the village boards and committees as absolutely possible. Sometimes people don't step up. So as a councilperson, I see your role as making that warm voice approach to those people that you've met and that have supported you during the campaign, and asking them to step forward and serve on village boards and committees. But the cultural diversity here is energizing, and the place that I've seen it celebrated best is at Doctor's Charter School. We have an excellent program, and especially, I think, Bier Jodala is here tonight, one of our faculty members, who run a whole lot of celebrations of the diversity of our student body and help all of the parents to come to those things as well. And it's really another part of having our own municipal school that is very special.
Time. To Hunt?
Thank you. Yes, that's one of the greatest things about Miami Shores is its diverse community, and I'm very proud to be a part of it. As far, you know, a lot of people may not realize this, but before the Unity Ball, before Unite Miami Shores, the Unity name was attached to Unity Day, which we just celebrated a month ago. And it's one of our greatest events in the community, and it's something that we've been promoting for years and years to try to encourage the diversity and encourage the different parts of our community to come together and rejoice and celebrate in that. And that's something that I think we're all proud of. As far as the school, Alice has hit it spot on the head with Doctor Charter School. That's a great example of a school trying to reach out and celebrate its diversity, and I think they do a fantastic job. And as a member of the village council, I will continue to try to solicit and recruit members of every diverse background and try to appoint the most qualified people to the boards to make sure that we have a good representation of our community on all of our boards.
And to Matt?
Yes, thank you. Unfortunately, I think the schools are going to be a little bit outside of our purview as council members, but there are other really substantive ways that we can encourage diversity and stimulate its recognition throughout the shores. As Hunt had said, Unity Day has been an incredible success, and really, that was founded on the notion that we should celebrate the diversity of the shores, and I think that it's been a remarkable success, and you can tell from the turnout that that is something that's been well-received. However, we also need to actively recruit folks for our boards when it comes to our boards and councils from a diverse background. It's not enough to just sort of passively accept or expect people to volunteer for these boards. We need to go out there and get the word out and let them know that their participation is critical to the success of the village. I think that that active engagement with the community will help, you know, bring a broader number of voices to bear on the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Yvonne?
I am the minority voice on this panel, so I speak from the heart here, and also the minority voice on council. I am bilingual. I speak Spanish. I woulda pon yo a cara, it's okay. No, no, I woulda ignored anything, any case. And it's so important to have a diverse representative. When I first saw the council two years ago, I saw, this is not representative of my city. This doesn't look like what we look like. Fifty-eight percent of us, according to the U.S. Census, are black and Hispanic and other. Forty-two percent are white, non-Hispanic. So it's really important that we understand that, and that number is only going to grow over time. And I would like to see more faces like mine up before council and on our boards. I think that it would be great to have more diversity. With more diversity, we get more unique perspective, and we really do bring and unite the whole entire community together.
Stephen?
I find this to be a very interesting question. Miami Shores has been a diverse community for many, many, many years. I have, you know, folks here who have lived here 35 years who are minorities, and we are growing more diverse. And as we grow more diverse, we certainly have to embrace and recognize that diversity. But it's been there for a long time. You know, I hear people talking about recruiting people for existing boards and trying to get minorities on boards. You know, the county has something that we don't have here, and I would just throw it out there and suggest we create something called a Community Relations Board. The county has one, a number of different municipalities have them, and that would be a board who would be consisting of different minorities, and their task would be, how do we reach out to those various minorities within the community and make us all feel united? Thank you.
Thank you. The new question, we're going to start with Alice. And this question comes from Susan Ackley. States, "The word progressive has been used by many of you. Could you please give an explanation and example of what you mean by the word progressive, if you've used it? If not, then what do you think others are using that word to mean in this election?"
I haven't used the word progressive in my literature or expressed that word. I haven't used the word progressive, but I embrace progress at every level. And I think that I have shown in my record of volunteering, which by the way, if I get elected, I have a salary increase because it goes from zero to a dollar. But I have a record of going forward, trying to push through the difficulties and get to yes. And oftentimes when I'm knocking on doors, I've said that I am fairly good at getting from no to yes with village government. And I would like to say that that's my definition of progress.
Hunt?
Well, I don't use the word progressive. I prefer to use the term progress-minded. I like to emphasize the fact that this council, previous councils, and hopefully, the council that I might serve on in the future will remain progress-minded and focused on measurable, attainable goals and achievements for our community. Bringing improvement after improvement while maintaining strong fiscal discipline is important to our community, and that's my definition of progress. Thank you.
To Matt?
Thank you. I have used the word progressive in my campaign, and I self-identify as an unapologetic progressive. I believe that a progressive believes that this is not as good as it gets and that we can do better. In the context of government, I believe that a progressive should always look for ways to make government create a better environment for its citizens and facilitate a better way of life for all of its citizens. I believe that in a lot of ways, Miami Shores has had a very progressive government over the years. If you look at our public service department, if you look at the Doctor's Charter School, if you look at our recreation department, there have been a lot of great progressive initiatives over the years that have been a part of Miami Shores. And I intend to continue to make this a better place to live for all of its citizens because I do identify as a progressive.
To Yvonne?
For me, the definition of progressive means the idea of moving forward, the idea of planning and preparing for the future while maintaining what we have right now versus what I did receive during the last two years in council. No, we can't do it that way because it's come up over the years. No, we can't do it that way because we've already tried it. No, we can't do it that way because of X, Y, and Z. And I found it very frustrating because there are things that we can do to move our city forward and to plan and prepare for the future. And so that's how I define progressive. That's how I define it for you. And that's my hope if elected again, that you can go ahead and plan and prepare for the future and move the city forward.
Thank you. To Stephen?
The definition of progressive is favoring progress as opposed to the status quo. So, I mean, I've heard from everyone up here tonight, except for Sean so far, and I'm going to presume that he's also in favor of progress as opposed to the status quo. I've heard that from everyone, so I think for all intents and purposes, you could label us, if you'd like to label us, as being progressive. I don't think I've used the word. Maybe I should use the word. Maybe I shouldn't use the word. I don't think it matters. I think all of us want to see this great village, this beautiful place that we live or can play in, move forward, become better. It's a great place. I mean, those who came before us have done a great job, and we all just want to make it better. Thank you.
Thank you. To Sean?
Yeah, I would also describe myself as an unashamed, unapologetic progressive. You know, I agree that being progressive is really usually just a way of looking at the world where you're driving progress forward, where you're always looking for better ways to do things. We're always looking for ways to really have a richer human experience together, and it's a way of approaching the world where you don't look at things out of fear, but you look at things out of hope, out of your dreams, and out of what kind of progress you can achieve. So to me, that's what being a progressive means. And you know, I think that the corollary to that is sometimes these terms become really politically loaded, and you hear talk about people being conservative. And I think that in terms of the village council, municipal government, it's important to also be conservative in that you're able to look at things and realize what was good about what we were doing in the past. But it's very important to be very progressive and say, what's not good about the way that we were doing things in the past, and how can we move forward and do things even better?
Thank you. New question, we're going to start with Hunt. Dennis, could we do a minute thirty?
No.
Uh-oh.
One hundred and twenty.
You have it set for one?
The latest version of my code.
Oh, really?
Yes.
One or two? Okay. Well, then, we're going to stick with one. I was going to try to give a little more time for this question. We're going to stick with the one, so we'll get a couple of questions in. We won't have questions until about 8:45 and then have our closing statement. So this question comes from several residents, and that is, "In order to fully develop our village's potential, we need funding. Are you willing to do what it takes to get state and federal funding? Are you aware of how to receive monies available, such as the funds received by Bow Harbor, Biscayne Park, and El Portal?" I'm going to add on to that, "Some have claimed that Miami Shores has failed to accept available grant money." If that's the case, can anyone give a specific example of that? And if strings are attached, what do you think about strings attached? All right, let's do a two-minute. So, because it took me two minutes to say it. Two minutes, starting with Hunt.
The real power, right down the third row.
This is a big issue.
Funding. It's one of the most important jobs we have on the council is to try to manage our budget, and obtaining funds from outside sources is a critical step in accomplishing that. There's been some talk about us walking away from funds and walking away from grants, and I think that does a disservice to what our village staff and what our councils in the past have done for this community. We have applied for grants, I believe, every year since I've been on council. Many of those years, the state has been going through some very turbulent times on its own, and while there's been some funds available, the pickings aren't as great as we'd like them to be. Now, it is true that our lobbyist, you know, has better start producing, or we might have to start evaluating our options. But in years past, we've received over a quarter million dollars in federal stimulus money for road repair work and for drainage projects in the village. I myself chaired the task force for a bikeability/walkability study, which resulted in a grant for our community. We've just recently applied for a grant, which, if successful through the TAP program, will provide us with over $600,000 for bike crossings, pedestrian crossings, and a dedicated bike path that would connect Barry University to downtown Miami Shores. So we are always aggressively looking for grant funds. I like to tell the story about our village manager packing up in the middle of his Easter dinner last year and driving to Tallahassee to try to get, you know, our share of a little bit of funds that came available in Tallahassee. Unfortunately, when he arrived, he was one of 200 municipal leaders there trying to get the same small total of money. So it's difficult sometimes for us to get this. Is it impossible? No. Can we get it? Yes. And we need to keep pushing for it, and I will do what we can to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. To Matt?
Yeah, I, first part of the question is, I don't know of any grant funding that we've passed up on, and I do know that there have been some grants that we've received lately. But what I'd like to propose tonight is that we're perhaps a little more aggressive in that. As I mentioned earlier tonight, I have worked at the state and federal level, and there are all kinds of opportunities out there for funding that I would like to spend a little bit more time on, whether it's an in-house grant writer or somebody that's in-house to try and identify these opportunities, whether it's, as Hunt said, that we need to sort of maybe change horses as far as our lobbyists and our consultants go. There are also general appropriations available out there, not just grants, and there are a number of cities that have gotten general appropriations for things like downtown revitalization, the SOD improvements, those sorts of things. A half a million dollars in the TED budget, which is the Transportation and Economic Development Budget, is not that far a stretch, and perhaps we ought to look into the possibility of adding support at the federal level as well, because as far as I can tell, we have done very little at the federal level to try and draw down money, and there are a lot of opportunities now, especially as the recession, we've finished our climb out of the recession, and there is more opportunities for funding there as well. Thank you.
Thanks. And to Yvonne?
Thank you. So the reason why this question came about is basically because of the work that I've done in the past two years. So I was asked around and I was to look like elected officials from all over South Florida to attend Tallahassee, to go to Tallahassee for Day Days. It's a day where elected officials go to Tallahassee and lobby on behalf of their community. I did that. I did not get any funding from our community. I paid it for myself. It was, you know, a little over $1,000 for me to go there for one night and two days. When I got there, I realized that all these other communities in and around South Florida were receiving state funding. This is from a $77 billion budget that the state had last year, and we were the only community in all of Gwen Margolis's district. Gwen Margolis is our state senator. Are you okay over there? Sorry. So Gwen Margolis is our state senator, and in her district, she's on the State Appropriations Committee. We were the only ones who did not receive funding. So I thought that, wait a second, something's going on here. We've been paying a lobbyist for the past 10 years, more than that. We pay him as Bob Levy and Associates $12,000 a year for a total of $120,000 for the past decade, and we've received nothing during that time. That is a huge oversight from the previous councils. It's something that we're leaving money on the table, and I immediately brought it up to the attention of the council, and it's something that I will continue to work and fight for. I realize that someone's looking at me. So during that time, I just want to give you some numbers. You know, Avantura for Stormwater got $425,000. This is just last year, last year. Bow Harbor, $600,000 for stores. North Bay Village, $600,000 for stores. Surfside, $40,000 for seawall, which we have one that also needs repair. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry for coffee.
It's okay.
Stephen?
Thank you, Sean. I hope you're okay. I'm not going to ask for a show of hands, but I'm going to make a presumption that everybody here likes free money. All right? And I'm not here to criticize prior councils for what they did or didn't do, or our lobbyist for what he may have not done. I will say that if there is money in Tallahassee that can be granted to this village for things like police equipment, police training, street scapes and likes, where the springs are not attached, that would create an issue for the residents of this village, I would be in favor of those types of grants. What I would not be in favor of are grants for things like perhaps our community center, which if we took them, we may have to open up that community center to the general public at large. We pay taxes. We're going to build a community center perhaps, and if so, that should be for the residents of Miami Shores Village. There's actually, and I mentioned this the other night, there's a deep restriction on that property, that it must be kept for Miami Shores residents only. So those are the two distinctions with respect to the types of grants that I would be in favor of versus not in favor. property, that it must be kept for Miami Shores residents only. So those are the two distinctions with respect to the types of grants that I would be in favor of versus not in favor of. Again, if it's something that we can get money for, and there's no strings attached, and it's a general applicability to our village, and it'll help us in a fiscal manner, that would be fantastic. If it's something that has strings attached, that's going to create an issue for the residents of this community, I'm not in favor of that. And I'll just throw in at the end, my law firm actually does have an office in Tallahassee with about twenty attorneys whose sole purpose is to get lobbying and grants and helping municipalities. So I'd be happy to open that office for Yvonne or Mr. Ben the next time they go up there to the hospitality, just in the doors that they could open for this village. Thank you.
Thank you. To Sean.
I just wanted to say, I've worked for nonprofits. I have worked for, I've worked for Broward County Board of County Commissioners and Small Business Development, and I went to school in Tallahassee and got, you know, a good look at some of the state government up close. And then, in addition, my wife Jamie works for the Department of Transportation, and I broadly agree with a lot of the things that I heard the other candidates talk about. I do think it'd be very important for us to create a full-time position for somebody to be on the lookout for federal, especially federal money, but federal and state money and nonprofit grants, and to be able to do the work that's needed to pull together the applications, be on top of it, really make sure we're really aggressive with it. I also think that it is important that we focus on the areas that are of public use, our streets, sidewalks. One of the big initiatives that the Department of Transportation had been working with the federal government, or they call it greening gateways, so that you can do things with landscaping and beautification around the entrances to the village, which I think would be very much along the line of the things that we would like to get money for. And I do agree that things that are more important to us for self-determination, such as the community center, would not be areas where we want to look for grants. Those are things that we fund that are for ourselves. But that is one of the, you know, one of the parts of my platform. I think it's very important that we take that on as a professional role and make it some of these full-time responsibility, because we can engage with consultants, but we do that, we already have to know that there's some opportunity we want to go after, and then we have to be willing to pay the percentage of the grant money to them when that comes up. So I think that we could do something that would be very cost-effective for our community, get the fair share of the tax money that you're already paying. Thanks.
Thank you. To Alice.
I think we all speak from our own experience, and we have a rich group of experiences up here. And I doubt that the coming council in the next couple of years would ignore this issue. I think it's probably a combination of lobbying effort as well as us being watchdogs of what was available. I myself was involved in two different grants, one in 2001 for the addition on the library that we have right now, and that was a state municipal grant for libraries. And that process was interesting, because we did have to look at what strings would be attached and whether or not that would affect our library services to our own residents. But we did successfully receive that grant and helped to build the library addition that's there today. And I think the other thing that I was involved in is Safe Roots to School, and that's another pot of money that is available. It flows from the federal level to the State Department of Transportation. We received that grant in 2008 to build the sidewalk. It didn't get built until 2011, but it, we did receive the funds, and the village was totally reversed for the building of the sidewalk on Northwest Fifth Avenue from 111th to 115th Street. At this Dr. Charter School, we are always being barraged with grant ideas and opportunities, and we do have a development director there now who looks for grants for our school. So those are some areas that I know about, but we can always do more.
Okay, thank you. So this is going to be the final question, and we'll start with Mac. You know, there's always more questions than there are time. Not going to be able to ask about moving, this is going to be a one-minute response to the question, and then one-minute closing statements. Not going to have time to ask about moving elections to November, not going to have time to ask about vacation rental homes in the village. But I did want to ask, because I've heard you all say you're against changing the zoning downtown, I've heard you all say that you're against changing the charter, you're even all against the guard gates, as of the other night. So there's a lot of areas of similarity. Of course, there are some significant differences as well. And so Charles Perez asks, "From what I'm hearing, you all agree on everything. What makes you different or more capable than your opponents?" And again, we'll start with Mac, and this is a one-minute response. And if I mischaracterize the positions I heard the other night, then you can correct that as well.
No, I think, I think there are broad agreements between a lot of the candidates on a lot of the issues. I think that what it comes down to is, given our own personal expertise and personal characteristics, which candidates would best be consensus builders and help move Miami Shores forward? I think that in terms of my own expertise, I think it speaks for itself, and I think that it would bring a lot of value to the shores, but most importantly, that experience has taught me to value the opinions and the abilities of others, and help to bring them in, to incorporate them into a successful Miami Shores going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Yvonne.
I think that's true. You're right about that, about this question. But it comes down to me, what makes me different, is that I'm going to listen to you, I'm going to consider it, I'm going to respect you and your needs if you come before me on council, as I've done. I'm going to work hard for you, and everything I tell you that I'm going to do, I'm going to follow through on it, and I have a tracker that can prove it. I respect everyone in the city, and really, people come to me often, and I always find a solution for them. It might not be what they're wanting, but it's definitely something that I've worked for. I've listened to them, and I've tried to get a solution for them. So you can count on me on that. You can count on me to work hard for the city. You can count on me to find new and innovative ways to make our city the best we can here as well.
Thank you. To Stephen.
Council members that you elect are your representatives, who are going to be up on the dais, who are going to represent your vision of what you want Miami Shores Village to be. We are all here for you all. What differentiates me from the other candidates, I feel, is my professional qualifications as a real estate land use and zoning lawyer for the last 25 years, the managing partner of a 50 attorney office of a 300 attorney firm, which provides me with leadership skills and qualities, as well as my record of public service to this village. We all want everything to be best for this village, we all want to move forward together, we all want to be united, we all want to have a consensus. This next council is going to have to work together very co-communically to make this happen. I've worked with the prior council, I feel I could work with anyone up here. I give voice of reason for this village, and I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. To Sean.
Well, it is a nice thing that we do share a lot of ideas about how we need to move the village forward. And I think that the way that I can uniquely help you do that is, well, I am your neighbor, I am a really good listener, I want to hear from all of you before and after this election. I have a long record of building consensus and successfully completing projects with diverse teams and organizations of all different sizes, very large companies, very small businesses like the one I run today. And I think that it's also, I have a kind of a unique perspective in that I'm someone who grew up here, who, you know, went away to school, lived in Broward County as well, and then moved back here and raising a family here, and really deep in the thick of all the things that go on here in Miami Shores Village. And I think that is what would help me understand your viewpoint and help express and conduct your viewpoint into the way that the village is run and the future shape of our great village.
Thank you. To Alice.
I think what's exciting here is that you get to build the team. You have so many choices, and you have so many, you have rich talent up here, and the challenge is to build a team that will get along. I have learned, I used to be more of a hothead, I am close to being the senior citizen of the people up here. And so that, I believe I've developed a good capability to reach out and build bridges amongst people trying to make decisions, and the best decisions for you. But you get to build the team. One of the things that you could look for, for me, is hard work, the wisdom of having done it before in most instances in terms of serving on public boards. I've supported families with children for so long, but I also am close to the needs of the senior citizens that want to age and place in Miami Shores. I'm a good listener, I'm approachable, and I would like to serve you, and I hope I deserve your vote on April 14. Thank you.
And to Hunt.
Well, I hate to be the bearer of the negative, but all those things you just said, I do them too. So you guys are all wrong, and, nah, I'm just, except for that lawyer one book jumbo stuff, I don't know any of that. What's that phrase, we've got a great slate of candidates up here, I think it's very refreshing, I'm pleased to see it. I think, I'm proud to say that I have the track, improvement track record of bringing improvements to this community, combined with a good budget sense of good fiscal discipline. I bring no external political agenda to the table. I serve purely it because I love this community and my commitment to help out Miami Shores. My family is a fifth-generation family in Miami Shores. I was walking out in front of my house the other day, and I happened to see the initials of my father and my uncle carved on the sidewalk out in front of my house, just brought to home exactly what it means to be here with our families and what matters most to us, our community. Keep residents first, and that's why you should vote for Hunt. Thank you.
Okay. And Mac. Or did you do that? You started that one. So there we go. We are now going to go to the one-minute closing statements, and we will start with Stephen Zuckowitz.
Finally, for once I get to go first, refers out of the other caller. Thank you. You know, again, I look around this room, and I see a lot of friendly faces, I see people I know, families who've come out, I see people who I don't know. And I hope that by coming here tonight and involving yourself in this process, you can learn more about the candidates here. We all want to serve you. I am not running for anyone but the residents of Miami Shores Village. I have the professional qualifications, the business experience, and most of all, I have the desire to serve you on the council. So I would ask for your vote. I want to remind you all, you get to vote for three candidates. I've been out there on the campaign trail, people think sometimes they can only vote for one, or they only want to vote for one. I encourage you to vote for three. And in any event, you're going to have a great council, and I look forward to serving you. Thank you.
Thank you. And now to Yvonne Ledesma.
I'm Yvonne, and I ask for your votes. I'm here to represent the whole community, people who have lived here for five generations and people who have just moved in. In the last term, I'm really proud to have been your voice, and I will continue to be your voice in this community. I care about you, and I'm here to serve you. And come April 14, I do ask for your, I beg to ask for your vote.
Thank you. To Mac Glenn.
Thank you very much. I hope tonight gave you a sense of the kind of councilman that I would be and the expertise that I would bring to the position. I've had less of an opportunity to talk about my priorities if elected, although I all did get to hear about my vision for downtown, and I hope that you can see the roadmap that I laid out for you in terms of making our downtown a better place to live. I encourage you to visit my website, macglenn.com, to learn more about my plan for public safety and building smart. But most importantly, I want you to know that I am someone who loves Miami Shores, who is raising his family here, who is committed to Miami Shores, but believes that there are important ways that we can do better. And I'd like to work with you, I'd like to listen to you, and work hand-in-hand with you to make this an even better place to live. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hunt Davis.
Yes, thank you. I would like to thank Unite Miami Shores for hosting this event, and to thank the theater. I have to admit, I had some memories of when I was a little child coming in here to watch some of the movies that were being shown here, although I've never sat on this side of the stage seeing it. It is, it is great to have the theater back in business here again. Very proud to be able to bring that and make that happen. I would like you all to think about what's important to you, about liking to vote for the best interest of you and your families for this future. Vote for the future Miami Shores, vote for improvement track record of bringing improvements to this community with strong fiscal discipline. Vote for Hunt Davis. Thank you for your support, and I ask for your vote on April 14. Thank you.
Thank you. And to Alice Birch.
Hi, I'm really sorry that I can't see all of you out there better, because I know I've worked with a lot of you, and I know that you know me, and those of you who don't, I wish to convince you a little bit of what my other minute, it was going to be in the old room, we thought we had two minutes, but we only got one, is that I want a strong focus on a vibrant downtown. I want crime prevention initiatives to happen, including Crime Watch, a broader Crime Watch. I'd like green initiatives, including your cutting-edge ideas. I want recreation programs that serve all ages, and a bigger and better Rockway Library. I'd like to work on possible annexation. I'd like to work for you. I look forward to seeing you on April 14, if you haven't voted already, and please mail that absentee if you have it in your possession. Thank you very much for the opportunity, and thank you, Giselle, for your coordination of Unite Miami Shores Forum. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's hear it from Sean Burdy.
And thank you all for coming out tonight and learning more about what all those candidates have to say. I just absolutely, you know, love Miami Shores, I love living here, it's a great place. I respect all of the residents here, all the choices that they make for their own lives and raising their own families. I think that Miami Shores' key asset, most important thing about it, are the people here. So I urge you to get involved as much as possible to, I know everybody here is going to vote, make sure your friends and neighbors vote. Of course, a vote for me is even better, but voting is really, really important. And I want to make sure that, you know, come to council meetings, watch them online, come to the board meetings, find out what's going on, you read the minutes, and really get engaged, because that's going to be the thing that really pushes forward all of the great ideas that you've heard described here today, and I think even all the great ideas we haven't been heard from you yet. So I really, I grew up here, I'm raising my family here, I'm running my business here, I'm a small business owner, IT consultant, and I do have an MBA, and I'm really, really looking forward to bringing my passion to show.
Thank you, Sean, and thank you to all of the candidates. I was going to ask you all to give them a hand, and I also applaud the audience. You were very well behaved, and I appreciate that, and so did the candidates. Before I turn the microphone over to Giselle to say a final comment, there is one more forum on Monday at Berry University, beginning at 7:00 PM. There's a meet and greet before 6:30. And of course, April 14 is Election Day, and you all know that. Make sure you vote and get other people to go out and vote. Thank you very much for a wonderful forum this evening. Thank you.
I want to thank you all for coming. I also want to tell you that we got tremendous response. All of our questions were emailed or written in by the community. These questions were what you wanted to know. We have a staff that we did not get to. What we're going to try and do at Unite Miami Shores is ask the candidates if they will provide answers, and we'll put it up on our website, unitemiamishores.com. In our lobby, you're going to find some flyers, Vote Miami Shores, it's got all of the details of voting. You can vote for three candidates, you vote at the community center, and you vote on April 14. Take responsibility, take a stab for your neighbors who aren't here, take responsibility for your block, just your block. It's super easy, it'll take you 10 minutes, it makes a world of difference. And make sure they get the proper information about when and where to vote. There's going to be a meet and greet for a little while out in the lobby now, and again, thank you so much for participating in your community, you're awesome.